Is 7:01, so I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Hopefully Bob Di Pietro will join us in due time. Cause I don't see him here yet. Okay. First item on the agenda, I'm going to again waive the Pledge of Allegiance. But public comment, is there any member of the public on the phone who would like to make a comment before we get going on our meeting?
Sandy, I'd like to request time if I could after the phone callers. Feel time.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to have a moment or two if I could after the phone callers can have time to speak.
Okay.
This is Bruce, by the way.
Yep. I don't hear any phone callers, so if there's an item on the agenda that anyone is on the phone wishes to speak on, please speak up when we get to that agenda item. Bruce, the floor is yours.
Sandy, thank you very much and good evening to the Board of Selectmen. I didn't want to speak to the, in request of the Fire Department, replace the outdated signboard in front of the firehouse with a new technology lighted signboard. As you know, this information board has been very well used by many organizations in town, as well as by the town for a wide variety of functions. And yes, we use it at the Fire Department as recruitment advertising. The location of the sign has been viewed by many, many people in town. A fantastic way of communicating with our Bolton citizens. The design from the past includes humans going to the front yard in all times of the day and weather to apply the individual letters. The couple that really should get an award were there and it was come several times. They're on snowshoes when we had two feet of snow changing the letters in the dark. Technology has made leaps and bounds over hand-applied messages. Lighted and computer science allows a few keyboard strokes for messages in a push of a button. Hence a message of different colors and light intensity. It displayed for the public immediately. With a calendar which it has, future messages can be entered today and it will appear in the date in the future. This rebranding of the information sign will mirror the current sign in shape and design. That was an Eagle Scout project a number of years ago. The current hand letter sign has been requested by the senior center, hence having two signs in town that look very similar. Communication with our citizens, projecting multiple messages every day, turning the lights down at night, and offering this to the community to use at no cost today. The cost to purchase this information board will be privately funded. No town funds for this. I have given Josh Kelly nine letters from the public endorsing this new idea. I believe Josh has those for you this evening. This, a very positive message center for the Fire Department. Thank you for the picture, Josh. I hope that in your discussions, you will agree to permit the Fire Department to move forward with our project for the town of Bolton. Thank you very much, Sandy. And those are the letters that have been addressed to the Fire Department. You got copies for the Board of Selectmen, Josh? If not, I can push the button and get them.
And in case folks are looking for this, it is located, all of these letters in one file titled 8D Fire Department Electric Sign Project. And that's found in the Google folder that was shared with all of us directly and which can also be found on the front page of the town.
These are letters as you're perusing them, letters from different organizations through the town. The churches, the Lions Club, the Boy Scouts. Toomey sent a letter in here, I believe it's the last one here. And also the neighbors of the Fire Department that see this sign 24 hours a day. And as one of them says, even all through the night because of the lights. He's even commented and put in the book here and the letter here about the accidents that have occurred because of lights and different types of, different time of night in the intersection to Nach road. Looking to relocate this sign and move it from its present location to the next driveway, area between the driveway, so it's more visible in Nach Road and less visible by the neighbors.
Can you explain that location again, please?
Sure. Are you familiar where I, where I park my car usually at the firehouse, Sandy?
Yes.
Okay. There's a tree right next to my car there. And then you've come down towards Bolton Center, there's a signpost which I had put in several years ago. No, it's 168 Bolton Center Road.
Correct.
My post in the tree, I'm looking to relocate it there. Actually have an electrician who wants to do the power for it.
This is actually on our agenda tonight at, I think it's, Josh, can you pull the agenda back up again? Please?
Section eight, new business D isn't dog.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. So we will be discussing that there. Thank you for your comments, G.
I appreciate the time.
Yep. You're welcome to stay or whatever. Approval of the minutes of April 7th, 2020. Also in our packet was March minutes, but I believe we postponed those. Is that correct, Josh?
Yes. So you, at the last meeting, because I had failed to, they were posted online, but I had failed to include them in the packet at the time. So it was, and to postpone the deliberation on those. You could approve those tonight if you wished.
I'll move that we, we'll do the March one first. We approve the minutes of the March meeting.
I'll second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Are there any additions or corrections?
Not that I read.
There was a lot to read.
I know. 14 pages. John did a great job. All right. All those in favor of accepting the March 3rd, 2020 minutes as presented, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I believe that was unanimous. Bob Di Pietro, have you joined us?
Josh, you want to give Bob a text or something?
I see him on the call. I think that Bob might be muted.
Oh.
But I do see him here in my little window. Hi, Bob.
I don't.
There he is. Hi, Bob Di Pietro. You're muted. Take your off mute, Bob Di Pietro. Okay, moving on. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the April minutes.
Download the approval.
Is there a second to that?
I'll do it, Sandy.
Mike seconded it, Mike Aramita. Any additions or corrections to that, those minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Bob Di Pietro, if you're in favor, raise your hand. I don't think he can hear us.
Whoever's the host can unmute him.
That is true. Well, Sandy, you do have that ability, but I'll go.
I may have that ability, but not that capability.
Yeah, I love it.
It's interesting. It won't let me unmute him.
Are you a co-host?
Yes.
You should be able to.
Oh, Bob, can you hear us? Now we can hear you. I get my call quick.
Hello?
Hi.
Wait, hang up.
We, no, Bob, we hear you. We are about to vote on the minutes of April 7th, which you should see on your screen. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? I believe that's unanimous as well. Josh, I didn't print the agenda, so you're gonna have to keep flipping back for me. I apologize. Appointments. Do we have any tonight?
I do not have any for you to, for your consideration tonight.
Oh, good. Good. And I'm not aware of any correspondence either.
No, me neither.
Okay. That brings us to Subcommittee's report. Properties and Facilities. We met today via Zoom with Tim Sadler, who has proposed a virtual net metering opportunity to the town whereby we, the town, would commit to purchase a certain number of kilowatt hours from his group at a specific price and would receive a credit on our electrical bills for a net of about five cents a kilowatt hour. So we, the facilities and Subcommittee and Public Safety, rather, Subcommittee will be continuing our discussions with Tim. So that hopefully by our June meeting, we're ready to make a recommendation to the full board. You may have remember that we chatted about Tim's project, which was originally scheduled, originally thought to be in Larry Pease's field opposite the high school. But apparently he's deter, determined that it'd take about $100,000 of his money to upgrade the Eversource infrastructure on Brandy Street in order to be able to accomplish that project. So it's not completely determined that it won't be in Bolton, but there are some, a lot of additional expenses. And when he originally approached us, he was under the impression that it could stay agricultural land and he would not be faced with commercial property taxes on the property either. So he's got a couple of hurdles to cover yet in Bolton. And on April 16th, we had a meeting of the Subcommittee meeting and we met with the Green Bank, Connecticut Green Bank, to discuss a potential solar installation in the form of carports at Bolton High School. That would provide somewhere between a quarter and a third of the electricity needed for Bolton High School. Is there anybody else, Mike or Bob Di Pietro, who wants to say anything about either one of those meetings?
The, I'll go first if Bob doesn't mind. The, the one we had about the high school was, it's an interesting project. I think we should definitely move forward with the idea anyway. The, it surprises me that we would only save about a penny a kilowatt hour with that one. Where with the virtual one, we could save about five cents. So it seems a little peculiar. There's a lot of fuzzy math that goes into both of these kinds of things. And it's, like I said earlier, it's like a Rubik's Cube trying to understand it all. So we do need some more, more discussion on it to at least make me comfortable with, with the, the virtual project anyway. I think I understand pretty well the one that goes at the high school. My only concern there is the future and maybe air conditioning that building in the future and, and the amount of power that we'll need at that point, but.
There is air conditioning at the high.
Oh, it's the center, it's the center school. It's not air conditioning. That's right.
Correct.
Okay. Yes. So, yeah, you know, I think, I think the one at the high school should move forward. I, I think we're in pretty good shape with that one. The other one I, I need to, I would bet that he's having as much problems with the other community as well with permits and things like that. He's probably got as many hurdles to jump down there.
Well, the, the property in, in Waterbury is located in a commercial area as opposed to a residential area here in Bolton. So they may already have some of that infrastructure there from a Eversource perspective.
But he would, he'd be paying commercial real estate property taxes where he might not here, give or take. We don't know yet, but.
Did they provide a schematic or a sketch of what that might look like that the?
Not, not the, the physical location on Brandy Street.
Just kind of a picture of a field with a bunch of panels in it is kind of what he showed us.
Yeah. Back when he.
That's a work in progress, I would say, right?
Yes.
Yes. And without being critical of Tim, I think he may be running too many circles and not necessarily getting out of the circle.
Yeah.
I think he's got a lot more work to do on, first of all, he'd have to go to planning and zoning in Bolton. And he hasn't even approached them yet. So it, that could be a non-starter for the Bolton project.
But we can still invest in it if it's in Waterbury. Which is the interesting part, it doesn't have to be in Bolton. Although it'd be nice so we get some taxes out of it and a few other things, but it doesn't have to be here. We can still get that kind of a savings, whether it's in Waterbury or here, so.
Yeah. Brought to you by the magic of virtual net metering, which I have to admit, Tim spent a good half hour today trying to explain it to us. And I think he's going to have to do a lot of it again.
Yeah. You're not the only one, Sandy. I'm, I, I left the meeting scratching my head a little bit.
Yeah. Yeah.
Not to detract from Tim's project, I do just want to make sure that everybody knows the item of, that was discussed on April 16th, which is carports at the high school is an agenda item later on. And we do, I believe, have Emily from the Green Bank on the line who will be able to answer questions at that point, should anybody have them.
Good.
Okay, good. All right. Yep. Let me, I should probably just pull up my own agenda here.
The next item on the agenda is Property Facilities Report, which I quickly did on the garage. And this is from John Butcher-Movich. He says, as of today, as far as he knows, the garage is waiting for one window to be installed. And that window had actually already been delivered, attempted to be installed. And it was found when they opened the box that it had been broken in transport. And that's why it's taking a little longer. Besides that, all that's left is the final inspection and then paving, which will occur with the new fiscal year. Besides that, the new garage is for all intents and purposes done.
Grading around here, I think they have, they have, they have, they make, open a doorway. You had to put a doorway between the new and the old. That was the other thing that wasn't done a week or so ago. I don't know if that's been done or not.
May I interject as someone who works there?
Oh, there you are.
Oh, hi, Chip.
Good.
Hi, everybody. Hi, everybody. How are you?
Can you fill us in?
Yeah. The only thing they've done as far as the door is they've cut the lower knee wall of concrete. And there were gentlemen working inside and we kind of thought that they were putting the fire doors in on the new building side, but aren't sure and can't see. And because the building is locked and we are, don't, aren't able to find a key, we can't check it out to see if it is done. There is some loose leftover steel in the wash bay that needs to be removed. And they have not connected the drainage on the, on the old building side. And when it rains, we have a moat between both buildings.
Ooh.
Update, Chip. That's very informative.
Thanks for the update, Chip.
No problem. There was, there was an engineer there that was going to do an inspection and couldn't gain entrance like we can't and was unable to do that. But there are, there are a couple pending issues that have not been addressed. So just so you know.
Thank you. Moving on to open space management and acquisition. I just want to alert the board that we have been approached again by a property owner for some property near Bolton Center. And we will be scheduling a Properties and Facilities Subcommittee to review that proposal in executive session as we're entitled to for freedom of information for property acquisition. Lower Bolton Lake, do we have any updates from Kim?
I haven't received anything from Kim. Kim, I don't know if you're on the line. If you're here, you're welcome to make a report directly, but otherwise I have nothing bad.
Okay, moving on. Fiscal year 20 budget report.
We are up on your screen. So every month, you all know that I have been trying to take particular care to highlight or, or at least each of you, the lines in which that we are somehow over spending. And of course, with this month, given that we only have two months left the fiscal year, I went ahead and anything that is over 10 12ths. So of course you can go ahead and do out that math. But somewhere in the ballpark of about 82, 84%. That also is over the expenditures of all of the prior years that are listed in our three-year look back. Those are the, the departments that I've been highlighting. And this month is actually our best month yet. We only have one that I can point out for you. That's a little bit over expensed and it's really no surprise. I think that they've, the fire, it's the Fire Commission. I think that they've done a great job of, all things considered, really reining in and trying to figure out how to best spend their funds, given that they started out the year on a rocky foot. Given that a number of funds, for those of you who haven't been privy to these conversations before, a number of funds that were thought to be expensed in the last fiscal year were reassigned by our auditor or just by the audit process through to this fiscal year. Besides, everything is currently under expensed for the 10 12ths that we should be at. Or we are under the amount that we've seen and/or we've, we are under the amount that we've been expensed in the past three fiscal years. So we're in great shape overall, 71.12% expense. And again, that's of, as of end of day, April 30th. Just, just last week.
Thanks, Josh.
Yep.
Any questions for Josh? Okay, moving on.
Budget transfers.
Budget transfers and/or appropriation requests. You may or may not be aware that the Board of Finance has cut the Board of Selectmen's budget by $30,000. So Josh went on a hunt to see if we could identify some projects that we could accomplish this year to offset that cut in the budget. And we identified four items. The first being the firehouse storage garage, which he proposed to move 15,720 from professional and technical services to the firehouse storage garage and which would be our capital improvements budget. Another 10,000 from professional and technical services to the center school windows. And since school is not going to be in session until the fall at the earliest, this is probably a really great time to get that done. And then.
Is that a replacement, Sandy, that they're doing or just some repairs?
No, it's replacement of several windows.
Okay. Thank you.
I believe they are the windows in, along the sidewalk in front of the building, but I could be wrong there.
That's my understanding.
That's mine as well. This is Kristen.
Oh, hi, Kristen.
Hi, sorry.
More security conscious windows being put in, I would assume.
Well.
Go ahead, Kristen.
I'm sorry. We have failing windows throughout the building, so we have a multiple year cycle. And for, I, I really don't want to say anything more than that with regards to security in a public meeting.
Thank you.
Yeah. Moving down the list, the $2,000 will allow us to extend the rentals, the RVs that are at the Nach Road Municipal Center for another month. And at the end of that month, we will reevaluate. And then the last would be transfer at the request of the Fire Department from professional and business training to vendor materials and supplies for the Fire Department.
I'll move the, we approve all of the transfers as presented.
Yeah, I'll start with that.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item?
Sandy, who was the motion maker?
Bob Mora.
Thank you.
Seconded by Bob Di Pietro.
Okay.
I forgot I'm supposed to mention that to you. Thank you for the reminder. So the proposed transfers are 15,720 from professional technical services administrative to firehouse storage garage capital improvements. 10,000 from professional technical services admin to center school windows capital improvements. $2,000 from professional technical services administrative to $2,000 rentals administrative. And 1,900 from professional and business training Fire Department to vendor maintenance and supplies Fire Department for service on tanker 234 and Rescue 124 air conditioning repairs. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any nays? Any abstentions? I believe that's unanimous. Thank you. Those are approved. I'd like now to chat a little bit about next year's budget and our expenditures. Josh has met with each of the supervisors in the various departments and has identified almost $315,000 that it looks like we may not spend for this year. However, we had previously committed $100,000 to return to the Board of Finance. I'm going to be asking the board to approve a budget transfer to the separation fund of $60,000. Today, we finally got our state police bill for overtime. And Josh and I were pleasantly surprised to see that it was just under $30,000.
Wow.
So that leaves us with a proposed return to the Board of Finance of 125,000. of $125,000 additional to the 100,000 we've previously committed.
That's good. I mean, and well, when, when, when that occurs and they're, they're meeting on Thursday night and that's the final, their final budget night, is that correct Sandy?
I think it's tomorrow. Isn't the Board of Finance meeting tomorrow?
The Board of Finance meeting is on Wednesday evening, yes.
Wednesday, okay. I mentioned it. So, so that that more than, than deals with a, the amount that's needed to, to get a zero. So quite frankly, I, they certainly should consider actually reducing the mill rate. I mean, money's there. But that's not for us, that's not, I know that's not for us to, to
Yeah.
Consider. I, 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 that's probably not appropriate discussion here. I'll save that for tomorrow night.
Yep. It's, it's sort of amazing that when we, when Josh met with them, now that we have almost a month of people not using town facilities, how much we're saving in heating, electricity.
Oh yeah.
And some of those kinds of things. So.
Sandy?
Yes.
Excuse me. It, it seems like an awful lot in comparison to previous years.
Actually, it's not.
Are, are we on track with the 300,000 that you're talking about? Or, or is it the 225 that you're talking about? The, because we're dropping, we're gonna, we're talking about the separation fund and the police overtime, but I don't remember us having 300,000.
Oh yeah.
At this time in the previous years.
Yeah, we have.
Really?
Yeah. Some, some of it again was committed and then transferred to the separation fund and whatever, but the, the 300 I think is slightly, slightly more than, than most years, but not significantly, I don't think. And I think we can put that. Josh and I spent some time this afternoon going through the various categories and making sure that we both understood where the hiccups could be. And I'm reasonably confident that we won't be spending that money.
Good.
So, but again, you know, we've previously committed the 100 transferring 60 to the separation fund and paying the state police bill. Had the state police bill been 100,000, which I was afraid of. We would, we could have been in a world of hurt had we still been in business.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the separation fund's a good idea because we've got some.
Yes, of course. There's a reason that Sandy and I have, have waited to bring that forward and it's not being discussed tonight. And of course that's to see how this next month goes and to make sure that we save that to the end and, and make sure we have as much money as possible at our disposal until that point.
Okay.
Thank you.
So is there consensus or does somebody want to make a motion to let the Board of Finance know that we're going to return approximately $125,000?
I'll second it, sorry.
Okay. It's been moved by Bob Di Pietro and seconded by Bob Mora. Any further discussion on this item of the proposed return to the Board of Finance, to the towards next year's budget? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Abstentions? I believe that is unanimous as well. Thank you. I will, go ahead.
That was to transfer an additional 125,000 to the Board of Finance?
To commit, to commit an additional 125,000 from this year's expenditures to next year's budget.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
All right. Anyone have any other ongoing business? Moving on to item eight, a consider and possible act on a prospective drive-through voting reg, referendum. Well, the governor finally got around to clarifying his executive order. And he basically said, yeah, no, you can't have a referendum. So this is basically a moot point. However, at our meeting last month, we did postpone authorizing or ratifying the determination to allow the Board of Finance to set the budget. And a motion to that effect to ratify our determination that the Board of Finance shall be adopting the budget for fiscal year July 1, 2020 to June 30th, 21. And to set the mill rate is appropriate.
I don't think we have any other choice.
I don't think we do either.
No, I, I looked at, I read this over and, and pretty much boxes in a corner. So and if you had waited a few more weeks, we maybe got away with it, but no. So I guess reluctantly I will move that we authorize the Board of Finance to set, set the budget and also the mill rate due to the order. Due to the governor's order, we have no choice. We cannot hold a public referendum.
I'll second.
All right. Moved by Bob Mora, seconded by Kim Miller. Any further discussion?
Why are you reluctant Bob?
I can't hear it. I couldn't hear.
Why are you reluctant?
Why, why am I reluctant? Oh, I'm reluctant because I am, am, I'm a true believer of, of, of voting, of, of allowing, allowing the public to vote. And we have an alternative. The governor, because of the mandate, we, you know, there are no legal means for us to do that. And, you know, whether we feel what I feel it's the wrong thing to do, I have no choice. That's, that's the law. We follow the law. I distrust the Board of Finance. It's not, I, I'm not making any, any innuendos on that. It's purely based on the governor's mandate.
Yes. Alright.
All right. All those in favor of the motion as presented to reauthorize the board or to ratify the authorization of the Board of Finance to set the budget, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Nays? Sorry, out of order. Okay, hearing none, that motion is also passed unanimously. Next is to consider and possibly act on a letter of intent for the carport solar installations at Bolton High School to the Connecticut Green Bank.
I'll make a motion that we approve it.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second it. This is Sandy. Motion by Mike Aramita, seconded by Sandy. Is there any?
Can you give us a synopsis of, of what this requires or suggests we do? I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay.
Want me to jump in?
Please.
And Emily, I don't know if you're on the line, but please feel free.
I'm on the line. Can you hear me?
Like to, we can hear you loud and clear. If you'd like to go ahead and just tell a little bit about what the letter of intent entails and what the next step will be after that. I think that would probably all of our.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And also I've got two other of our team members on the line as well. BP of Finance, Mike, Mackie Dykes and Alan Sabans from CSW Energy. So they can jump in as well. Be happy to answer questions on the letter of intent and also the project. This letter of intent is just signifying that the town would like to move forward with the property listed on there, which is just the town high school. Would move forward, giving the Green Bank permission to secure utility incentives for the project. And move the project forward. It's not binding in the sense that there's any repercussions from the Green Bank if you don't move forward and do the project. The only repercussions that would come from signing this letter and not doing a project would just be that the utility incentive we secured on behalf of the property would eventually expire.
My only concern was if, if, if financial circumstances dramatically change, which appears that we could pull out if, if that occurs. So, thank you.
You know, af- after sitting and listening to the entire presentation, I think it's a good project. Good for the environment and makes fiscal sense for us. It's not a ton of money. It's a couple of hundred thousand dollars over the 20-year period. But it, it makes good sense environmentally for us to go forward with it.
And I have to agree with that. I've spent a lot of time talking to Emily and reading through the information provided. And I, I don't see that there's anything any way that the town or the environment can lose in this and there's a lot to be gained.
Yes, definitely.
Are there any other questions from the Board of Selectmen? Kristen, are you still here?
Yes, I am.
Do you have any words of wisdom for the board on this?
No, you know, I, I think it's great and it, I was surprised at the savings. I, I thought it would be more. The only thing, the conver, I had a conversation with Joe Misselli today. The only question that I have is about graduation. And he doesn't seem to think it will be a problem. But I guess when we get further along in the process, we just want to make sure where the things are going to be in that side parking lot. Because that is where we graduate. And honestly, I had that, you know, that happened to me at three o'clock this morning. I had that aha moment.
You know, that's kind of why I asked the question about the schematics as to where it is in relation to, you know, what we're doing. And, and that may modify what we want to do and, and, you know, impact. Not that the project isn't good, but I think it's critically important that we really have in place, you know, the, the placement of, of, of this thing. Concept, conceptually, it's an excellent idea. It always has been. And it's just a matter of the practicality, how it works. And Kristen, you brought up an excellent point. I hadn't even thought about that, but also how it impacts, how do you remove snow? Now.
Well, yeah, and that was something, that was something we certainly did talk about when we did the initial walkthrough for sure. And we actually had Pete there because he operates the truck there to, for, you know, thoughts on that when we did the walkthrough, but I'm very focused on graduation right now. I think that's why I had the aha moment at three o'clock this morning.
Well, good luck. I, I, you guys are, I, I really am happy I'm not in your shoes at this stage of year. That's a tough one.
It is.
Not particularly about solar, but do you have any feedback on the results through the efforts of the ground, ground, concentrating heat pump? The ground, the ground source? Heat and air conditioning there? In other words, what was the benefit of that in terms of dollars?
Are you, if you're referring to the geothermal?
Yes.
Yeah, we have, you know, actualized savings over what we would have had had we not had that for sure.
That's fairly right.
I'm just curious how that compares, compares with what we are looking at here? Does anybody have any dollars and cents? Who monitors that?
The Energy Committee has done some work on savings. But I don't have those numbers in front of me.
Okay. I'm just curious. Because at the time, it was supposed to be a big deal and we all had a lot of slogan to do out to our community about the benefits of putting up the money for the ground geothermal. And I'm just wondering how that compares to or suggesting the benefits of the solar might be comparatively.
Yeah, I, I don't know if we have, have anything to compare the geothermal with though Bob, because the building in its current configuration didn't exist before the geothermal. So we'd be looking at estimates versus what we've, what we're spending.
Understood. Okay.
This, this comes out to about 13,000 the first year, if I remember correctly. And because of increased costs and everything, it would, it would tap out at, I think they said 230 or somewhere right around there in 20 years. So it's kind of a fixed savings for us as opposed to a fixed cost of any kind.
And, and if I remember correctly, the 13,000 was based on flat electrical rates and God, I'd like to be able to get those.
Yes.
And do we still have the, the Green Bank folks on?
Yep, we're still here.
Ask a question. And, and I know that the incredibly advancing technology for the solar panels are, I mean, I mean, almost monthly they're, they're improving. And this is based on a 20-year cycle. Is it, is it a 20-year life cycle? Or is that, how's that figured in? Is it, you figure in a 10-year, 15, 20-year? Or what, what is that? Or is it? Go ahead.
This is Mackie with, Mackie Dykes with the Green Bank. The, the, the warranties on the panels are typically 20 years. So you can expect them to last at least for that. And most likely, you know, solar is relatively new technology, but there's, we expect that they'll last even longer than that, 25, perhaps 30 years. They won't be as efficient as when you put them in. There is, there's a, an inverter, another piece of equipment that goes in. Those typically last 10 to 15 years. But the Green Bank, as the owner of the system, would pay to put in a new inverter, you know, at some point throughout the 20-year PPA term to make sure that the system keeps producing. Because again, we don't get paid unless the system produces. So we want to make sure it's working.
Well, I'm, I'm thinking ahead. Obviously I will not be here to even worry about it, but in 20 years though, on a lot of these projects, it's kind of like new roofs on the school. And, and are these panels structured in such a manner, you simply take them off and put new ones on? And off you go with the, with the newest and greatest, probably generate three times the electricity that currently has. This.
Yeah, it'll be a carport. So you could, yeah, you, you could take off what's on there and use the structure.
Alright, thank you.
And that, if I could, if I could just clarify one point. The PPA rate that we're presenting here is, is just an estimate. You know, the solar map program is designed to put together all the elements, or for the Green Bank to put together all the elements of a solar project. One of the, for the municipality, one of the key One of the, for the municipality, one of the key elements is someone to build it. We have not procured that yet. That's why we want to get you to sign the LLI before we put your project out in an RFP. So we're estimating what the build cost sort of the ceiling would be. We're hoping to get it lower than that for the RFP, which would bring that cost down. But we just don't know. So we're saying this is the highest standard we'd accept through that RFP. So this is sort of the worst case scenario of what you'll see in a PPA. So hopefully, you know, through the competitive process, we can do better. But you're not going to, you know, you need to see some sort of a number here to make a decision.
Sandy, this is Bruce. Could I ask a question here? Interject.
Certainly.
I haven't, bits and pieces, I followed your project, sir, and the lady on the phone also. You just made a statement, you are the owners of all the equipment?
That's correct.
Yes.
And the project, this project is spread out for how long a period, 20 years?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so at the end of 20 years, I've been told on the fireside that panels have a tendency to degrade and they're no good after a period of time. Then you're going to replace them or it's up to Bolton, Town of Bolton to get rid of these panels if they're no good?
After, during the 20 year term, it would be up to us if something happens with one of the panels to replace it. Because we, we don't, you only pay for electricity that the system produces. So we want to make sure it's producing so we get paid. After the 20 years, if you want to, there's three options. The Green Bank can come and take, or the owner of the system can come take the panels off. We can look at extending the term. If you're still happy with the, you know, with the production coming off there in the savings, or you could buy the system from us.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That answered my question.
Okay, any other questions or comments for the Green Bank?
Nope.
Hearing none, all those in favor of allowing or directing me to sign a letter of intent with the Green Bank as presented tonight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Yeah, aye, aye, sorry.
Nays? Abstentions? Hearing none, I believe that's unanimous as well. So I guess Emily and Mackie, this is, our next step is to, will you send us a completed letter of intent for my signature? Do you want us to fill in the blanks here? What's our next step?
Sure, if you could sign this form, we can execute it on our end and we'll send you an executed copy.
Okay, we will get that done over the next several days and get it off of them. Do you need an original or can, can it be an emailed copy?
Emailed is fine.
Okay.
Sandy?
Excellent, yes.
Do we have a copy or a drawing of the placement of these panels?
Uh, we do.
Okay, I just, for like Bob's question and Kristin's question, it'd be nice to see the drawing. So as long as we have a drawing of the proposed locations.
It's, it's on the screen right now, although the long blue line on the north side of the high school, which is away from the three, for those of you who might be direct, the three blue are over the Board of Education parking lot. The larger blue, the location of that may not be final.
Okay.
It may go farther to the north.
Okay.
I know Joe was, had some concerns about that particular location.
It probably would make a lot of sense that the maintenance around it would probably be a lot easier too. And being in the middle where you got to go around it.
Yeah, it probably will require, well, definitely will require restriping of the parking lot.
Oh, yeah.
I have a really, really strange question. What if there's vandalism? Who's responsible for that?
Mackie, can you take, or Emily, can you take that question of what, what happens if there's vandalism?
The, the Green Bank would be responsible for damage to the system. It's our, we own the, the system. So I'll, I believe that we would be, I'll confirm that it, just to make sure that's the case. If it's not, I'll let you know. But I believe that, that we would be responsible for that.
Oh, I think.
Okay, well, thank you, Mackie and Emily and whomever else on the phone from the Green Bank. I appreciate your participation and we'll get this signed agreement out to you fairly shortly.
Thanks for having us.
No problem. This is not the time for my computer to decide it's shutting off. Next item on the agenda is consider and possibly act on setting admission fees for Indian Notch Park. And Josh, I'm going to let you talk us through this.
Sure thing. So, and a lot of the information that you see here in this agenda item summary, it's been collected from a number of different sources, obviously all verified. But these came from Jill, our Finance Director, Kailene, Mike, our Recreation Director, and John Buttermovich, our Director of Buildings and Grounds. Mind, we have this information in front of us from the summer of 2019. Revenue from admission to Indian Notch Park totaled $25,745. Of that, a 4.8% was generated through the sale of season passes, or about just over $1,200. Of the 40 season passes that were sold, 30 were sold to Bolton residents, and the remaining 10 were sold to individuals who live elsewhere in the state. Generally speaking, we're talking about Coventry, Vernon, towns that are very close to Bolton. Although I do believe that we had someone from, I want to say West Hartford, a little further away. So overall, the remaining 95.2% of admission revenue was made from single day passes being sold. And we don't keep a tally of exactly who is buying any, any of those day passes, or at least I wasn't able to produce that data for you today. But in any case, due to the increase in the minimum wage, our normally staffed beach would cost just under $25,000 in lifeguard wages this summer. And in addition to that cost, our Builds and Grounds Department estimates that about $45,000 of our, their funds was spent on park maintenance in 2019. So that gives you a sense of while we are bringing in a good chunk of change, more or less to cover the amount of lifeguard wages, a chunk of change generated from admission to the park. There is quite a bit more money that goes into the park than is generated from these admission fees. And you can see here, I believe I can highlight for you, or maybe not. Oh, here we go. But you'll see in the highlighted section, the fees that we were charging individuals who were looking either for season passes or who were looking for day passes in 2019. So the question before you today is whether or not these fees should be held level or should be increased or decreased, changed in any way. On one hand, of course, it makes common sense to say, well, if want to be making a little bit more money off of this, maybe we should consider increasing the fees. On the other hand, the more you increase the fees, the fewer people who are going to feel that it's worthwhile to spend that kind of money on getting, getting admission to the park. So that's an issue that you're all going to, and of course, I'm here to help. But consider as we go forward, I know that there's also been, at least in terms of some outreach that's been done to my office. I know that there are some residents in town who wonder if non-residents, day passes are too low in terms of their costs and if they should be adjusted. But there's always a question of how should that balance be put forward? And how much of the fees that are collected should be balanced on the backs of Bolton residents versus those who are joining us from other municipalities?
Well, Josh, when I, when, we're limited as to how much greater percentage we can charge non-residents just because of the initial funding there. I think it can only be three, maybe two and a half times or three. I'm not, I don't recall, but that's the limitation. So if we take, you know, right now, we, you can see on, on, on the weekend pass, that's the big one. It's three times. And the day, the day passes, and it's the weekend passes, is the vast majority of, if you will, our visitors come in, it's generally the weekends, it's the highest. And on a weekday, tends to be more residents than non-residents. It's just historically, that's where it's been. And that, and that's one of the reasons why that, that portion of, of the fee is, is what it is. You could, you could, you could raise, you could raise a non-resident portion on that, a few dollars. I don't think, and yet, you wouldn't raise Diddley Squad as far as additional funds. But I, if, if, let me just ask a question, but probably just a statement. I think John and everyone developed their budgets based on the, these projected incomes, correct?
The projected incomes, my understanding is that would go, my understanding is that would go directly into the recreation fund.
Yeah, right. And, and, and John, and, but John's cost, I know this, all these costs are here, but the, the, the added costs are, I'm, I'm pretty sure John factored that into his budget. So those, those numbers factored into our operating.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, so even if we accept it just as it is, it's not, it will not have, I don't want to use a double negative, but we will not have a negative impact on our operating budget. It's factored in.
Correct, right. Brian, I'm sorry, I probably should have led with this as well. The reason, of course, that this is before you, of course, we're coming on the hypothetical opening day, of course. Question mark over whether or not that's going to happen, at least on time. But Kailene is currently doing everything that she can to make sure that we're ready to open whenever we get the go ahead, both from the Governor's Office and then from Unified Command in Bolton. And she wants to make sure that any items that are produced, at the very least, these fees are written correctly. So there wasn't necessarily a specific ask to change the fee, I guess I should say. It's just a general question of will they're same or not.
Then we keep the rates, the fees, as they were last year.
Is that a motion, Bob?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved by Bob DePietro and seconded by Mike Aramita that we maintain the 2019 admission fees and pass fees for Indian Notch Park for the summer of 2020. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That's unanimous, thank you. Moving on to consider and possibly act on referring the matter of electric signage at the Bolton Firehouse to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'd like to start the discussion on this. Our town zoning regulations currently prohibit any of our local businesses from having an electronic or lighted sign in any shape or form. The town, however, is not subject to our own zoning regulations. But I think it would be, I understand all of the concerns and advantages of this, but I think taking advantage of the fact that we are the town of Bolton and none of our businesses could do the same thing is just a slap in the face to our businesses who have already been beat down pretty far.
Sandy?
Yes.
I understand that argument and I, I think in, in your last statement says exactly how I feel. I think that our businesses, this is one thing that may prohibit businesses or one thing that's negative to attracting businesses. And it's probably something that should change in the zoning regulations. And I think that this is a perfect way to start that and, and put this sign in. I think it's a very tasteful sign. I don't think it's the, the old neon that we're all thinking about. This is an extremely well-done, new LED type thing that will look very nice in our community. And I think, I, I really think that zoning should change, to be perfectly honest. And that can't happen immediately. And where we do have the funding that's been offered to us to buy this now. And I think we should start by doing it. I, I really think that this is something that our businesses should have available to them. And I think it's a good thing for the community and the people that live around this, the, the firehouse. And I'm not one of the ones that has to go out and stock that sign in the wind and everything and pick up the letters all over the neighborhood. I have yet been given that detail, but I see the people chasing the letters around the neighborhood. And it's, the, the current type of sign is just not good for what we do. And, and being able to put up an emergency notification quickly on this or have somebody call us and ask us to put up a side notification and being able to do it from a home computer would be really, really, really nice for the community and for the people that use the sign, the Boy Scouts, the churches, the town itself. And I just think it's a good idea. And it would give us, well, we, we could see what it's like, to be perfectly honest. And I think we'd be very pleased with it.
I may like to speak as well, that. I can recall when Cinda Simonized, the hoops they had to go through just to get that sign, which is not quite a lit sign, but it is. But it had to be configured in such a way it didn't qualify as a lit sign, which made absolutely no sense. And I think we have an opportunity here to show what a modern lit sign can be, if done right, tastefully. It can, we can set the standard for what should be happening for, potentially for businesses in town and set the standard for, for the zoning board to look at and perhaps modify their, their regulations. Not our position that you suggest that they modify, but I think we can, we can set the standard. And that, you know, no one was, we, we were looked at with a, with a funny eye when we first put the initial signs up there in front of the firehouse. We had discussions with, with members of the planning and zoning on that one. We're using a system, quite frankly, that when I worked for the drive-in theater and changed the kiosk out front, that's the same type of system that we are currently using today. That tells you how totally out of touch and out of, out of pace that system is. It really is, and it antiquated system. Was being proposed, I think it's tasteful and can. And I think, I'm, I'm sure the, the chief in the department would, would certainly be willing to work with anyone in, in the town to make sure it, it will be just that, done properly and tastefully. And really to set an example on how, how to do a lit sign properly and in a way that is acceptable to our community. I'm done.
Well said, Bob and Mike. I agree completely. So I'd be willing to make a motion. I'd be willing, go ahead and do that, huh?
Go ahead, Bob.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and proceed to recommend this signage to be considered by the zoning boards for installation at the town fire department. considered by the zoning boards for installation at the town fire department according to changes that have been suggested and consistent with remarks that both Bob and Mike made. And the last part, that'd be part of the motion, but I like the idea. Sandy, you know, I'm a farm boy, a farm boy. I've been here 30 years and I'm non-villain trust because I want to see farming continue. But to me, this is kind of a balance between moving from a really rural, old-time, dark age, not to be at the Las Vegas, we're not talking about neon Las Vegas strip here, we're talking about a transition. I like the idea and I support it.
But Kim, can I speak?
I, I need a second to this motion first.
I, I, I would second it, but I, I, I'm not sure if I understood the beginning of the motion. And I wanna, I wanted to make sure, Bob, is, is your motion to, to have the town move forward with the sign and with, with comments from the members or rather from our, our zoning enforcement, our zoning enforcement officers? Is that, is that what you're in debt with? I, I wasn't like.
I, I would like to see us just move forward, just move forward and permit the sign and go forward with it because the zoning board is going to reject it anyway because it's against their regulations. And I think that we should just move forward and approve the sign and let the people that are willing to donate the money to put it in, donate the money and go forward.
Then I amend by motion accordingly.
Then I'll second it, Bob.
So now we can talk?
Yeah, go ahead.
So I'm torn. So I'm totally in support of a sign, right? Totally in support. I love it. I think it's pretty, I think it's important, it's public safety, I think it's great. My torn part is around, you know, your point about businesses in town and it seems a little bit like, oh, we don't have to follow the rules. So I'm a little bit on the line, right? And, and I don't feel like I have enough information as to, I mean, I can guess, right? Why they don't want to, just, you know, signs like that in our town? Is it just to keep it rural, get rid of all the technology, we like it to be classy type of thing? So, you know, maybe they need to look at changing their zoning rules, but I'm a little torn.
Kim, I.
Maybe keep talking.
I, I, I think, I think you're justified in being torn. I, since I've been in town and, and listened, it always comes up, you know, what can we do to stimulate economic growth and.
Oh.
And everything we do seems to go fly in the face of that, from drive-through, which they didn't, you know, people didn't want. And, you know, whether it be a Dunkin' Donuts shop or a lighted sign outside of Georgina's that, you know, they could put their specials on or whatever, we have limited commercials.
Oh, I'm with you. I think we need to look at those zoning laws and like.
And I think this is a way to prompt that, you know, and, and to some extent, and, and, you know, Sandy was right, we don't fall under the zoning regulations. And if the zoning board doesn't take another look at this, then yes, people might say that it flies in the face of, you know, what everybody else gets to do. But I think this might be the impetus to get them to take another look at that. And I think doing something tasteful will show them that our community can survive with something like that.
Yeah, and I can sort of explain a difference in my head too, right? Like the difference of a business is I'm trying to attract customers, whereas this seems more like communication to people, public safety, right? There's a different objective and a different purpose. So you want to have an easy way of communication.
You know, we, we use it for everything, from, you know, town events to church events, to children's events, to Boy Scouts. It gets used by the entire community in one way, shape or fashion every year.
You know, I have to agree with everything everybody said, with the exception of the fact that we are saying to our businesses, we really don't care about you because we don't have to follow the rules and we're going to do what we want and you're on your own. And I think that's the absolute wrong position to take. I, I don't disagree with anyone that the old sign is outdated. I just think that if we're going to do something like this, the way to do it is to go to the zoning board and say, we want you to change your sign regulations to allow this and then we're going to do it.
Sandy, would you mind me chiming in for a second?
Sure.
And I don't want to comment, obviously, the decision of whether to move forward or not on this particular sign is a job for all of you, sheet, the conversation that you've had on it. I just want to, from my background, reflect to all of you, some of the experiences I've had. I've, I've not only worked for it, but had the chance to observe a few communities where not necessarily electronic signage is the issue at hand, but where a town has decided to go against its own zoning regulations or other regulations that it happens to be exempt from. And it's, as Sandy said, not always positive. I wonder if there's a middle ground that you can all just take this thought and, and consider it. But if you did decide to move forward with this sign now without it going all the way through planning and zoning, perhaps a formal motion or recommending to the Planning and Zoning Commission that they take this up, at least at the same time, would go a long way with the business community to help. Don't just leave it to the Planning and Zoning Commission to read between the lines, I guess is what I'm saying. If you send a more formal message and very specific message to them about what you intend for them to do or, or hope that they will do or not do, it may go a long way with, first of all, those commissioners and second, with your businesses, should you decide that the sign, moving forward with the sign project at this time is the right.
I, I would be more than willing to make that motion following this one, that if we move forward with this, I would be more than willing to make a motion that we formally recommend to the planning commission that they begin to look this, take another look at this issue and, and move towards allowing signs of this type.
This sounds more like what I was originally trying to say. Sandy, would you be okay with what Matt said?
Um, I'm opposed to the town doing it before the regulations are changed, period.
The regulations could take two years.
I understand that. But if, in my viewpoint, if 3Js can't have it, neither can I.
Well, that's true, but, but I'm sitting here saying 3J should have it, we should have it, 3J should have it, and somebody's going to have to set the standard to move it forward.
And, and we have private, private donors that are willing to do it, residents and neighbors that are in favor of it. And it, it's a necessary thing if we want to continue to use that sign for public information. And that's what this is, a public information sign. It's not advertisement for anything, it's just public information.
Well, that's a good point.
There is no carve-out in the current regulations for a sign that is purely informational. In fact, there is a specific prohibition to all electronic and lighted signs.
May I make a comment?
Sure, I'm not sure who that was.
It's Chip, Chip White, how are you? We have two lighted commercial signs in town now on both gas stations, Valero and Shell, and they're the same signs that we would find on the Berlin Turnpike.
And that is correct. And those individuals had to apply for a specific permit from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And it cost them significant dollars to get that sign.
But, but we don't have to spend those dollars as an agency.
I totally understand that.
And they were, they were allowed by the planning and zoning, even though there are no regula, regulations for them?
You can apply, our regulations allow you to apply for a variance or, and in some cases, if your sign or a similar sign was in that location when the sign regulations came up, you're allowed to continue to have that sign. And to be quite frank, I have no idea those were put in place.
Yeah, that's where the Shell station, that's the, the position the Shell station took on theirs. I don't know what, I don't know about the other ones.
What was the position? Sorry, I missed that.
The Shell station was a, long before that was there, it was another station that had, had that, number one, it was two issues, was the height of the sign, it was also lit sign. And it got down to the issue of, it was an existing non-conformant. And prior to the zoning board, their sign, their, prior to zoning board, creating their existing sign, sign regulation, so, which makes it legally, they had the right to do it, and they did. On the other one, I have no, no idea how and why it happened that way. The fact that, that these things are happening and tells me that, you know, it's, you can't, I don't know, I remember well, I don't understand why, what, what, what the objection is. I mean, I honestly don't. But I'm going back to my original thought. This is a project that's, that is to me, and my personal opinion, that we set the standard on how to properly do it. And if, if planning and zoning want to use this as a basis to modify their sign regulations, but we all know, that's, as Mike says, could be six months, could be two years. It's just, just the way it is. And I don't think we, you know, we, the town is, is, is a, trying to do a slap in the face to business because I think we all, everyone on this, on this board recognizes the fact that anything that we, we in fact want to promote businesses and anything we do to help it is, I, and I think this is more of a help than a hindrance to, to helping to promote business. We can set the standards for these type of signs, hopefully stimulate some modifications for that. And I, I frankly think we should go forward with it. I think it's a good idea. And the one thing that all this, this Corona thing and everything we're going through now is, is the, the importance of information, miss, and, and frankly, misinformation goes flying everywhere, particularly on these social media. Here we have an opportunity to have something that it would, would be the, you know, this is the board, this is where for emergency purposes and for informational purposes, it could be utilized highly effectively, far more than we have now. And I'm, I, I, I am in favor of having, going forward with it just as it is and notifying the planning and zoning that this is what we're looking to do. We welcome their comments, welcome their, and go from there. But we're going forward, I, I would say.
All right.
I was going to say, how about if we go back to what originally tried to say? We recommend this to the board of zoning board and give them maybe a, maybe if we gave them a timeframe, like be reviewed within a certain time period.
Do that to them.
They, they, their regulations could take years to change if they decide to change them, which I think this going forward will give a reason to change. They will, business will know that, that we're looking to the future as, or as opposed to the past and looking to the future in a very, a way that meets the needs and the, the way we want our town to appear.
And I do, Mike, I think we're telling the businesses that we don't care about you because we don't have to.
And I.
We could put it in a temporary emergency cap basis because COVID-19, it's very important to be able to communicate information simultaneously.
We, we can't really put it temporarily because that's about a $15,000 or $17,000 sign. That's, that's big, big dollars that, that people are willing to, to donate, to put it up.
All right, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of allowing the fire department to install the sign, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Abstentions? Okay, that's four ayes and a no.
No, I abstained, sorry.
Oh, you abstained, sorry.
Yes.
Okay. All right, three ayes, an abstention and a no. I will notify the Planning and Zoning Commission that we are going forward to this and request that they consider a change in their regulations to allow others to do similar things.
Sandy, would you like a motion to that effect, that we request that they review?
I thought we had one.
Well, I, I'd like to make a separate motion that we request that the Planning and Zoning Commission review their regulations on electra, or signs of, lighted signs, a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen that they review that, their regulations.
That's fine. So is that a motion?
Yeah.
Mike, was that a motion?
Yeah, 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 motion, just to what you were just saying, that they look to review their regulations regarding lighted signs.
Okay.
Sure, I'll second your motion.
All right, so it's been moved and seconded. I think we've discussed this sufficiently, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? That one is unanimous, thank you. Next item on the agenda is consider and possibly act on authorizing the administrator and the first selectman to jointly approve transfers or $5,000 or less for the remainder of the fiscal year.
Awesome.
Thank you. This is very similar, oh, is there a second out there?
Second.
Thank you, Bob DePietro. So moved by Bob Morris, seconded by Bob DePietro. This is very similar to what's gone on in most prior fiscal years. Any transfer greater than $5,000 will come to the board, may require a special meeting, but I certainly hope not. I think we've already addressed most of the major transfers that are going to come along. Any further discussion on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No one's opposed, any abstentions? Thank you, that is also unanimous. Josh, do we have any other new business?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay, anybody else have any other new business? All right, moving on, COVID-19 preparations. Our Emergency Operation Committee continues to meet weekly. We are in contact with the governor's Emergency Operation Team on a weekly basis as well. And Jim Rupert, Josh Kelly and I have been part, and Chief Dixon and, Mike, I'm not sure what your fire department title is.
It's now deputy chief.
Okay, congratulations, Deputy Chief Aramita, have been participating. Have been participating in those calls as well. This past week, Jim Rupert and I appointed Carrie Concatelli, a local resident and also our senior and social services director as Bolton's recovery coordinator. She will be serving as the liaison to the community, the not-for-profit groups and the faith based faith based groups in town. Prepare to come out of the lockdown and quarantine. And we've asked Patrice, appointed Patrice Carson to be a deputy coordinator and to put Patrice in charge of the liaison with the local businesses. That will allow Carrie to focus on the social services and the faith based faith based communities and give Patrice the focus of our, on our business community.
Yeah.
Moving on to charter revision.
Sandy.
Go ahead.
Did, do we have changes in our numbers in town? I had heard some rumors. Have we increased and maybe lost another person?
As of this morning, we have thirteen positive case, confirmed positive cases, four of whom were hospitalized at some point or another. I don't know how many active hospitalizations we have. And yes, we do have our third death. So it was pointed out to me today by a local resident that Bolton has half of the deaths in our eastern Highland, the ten towns in the eastern Highlands Health District. One is wow. One is in Mansfield and two are in Tolland. So despite having, there are a hundred and twenty-nine cases in the health district, confirmed cases in the health district. And thirteen of those are in Bolton. So we have one tenth of the cases and half of the deaths.
And you might want to mention that we only have a very minor number that were actually hospitalized, hospitalized.
Correct.
And 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 two of the deaths occurred very early on.
Yes.
Both were in the same category of those four folks in in nursing homes as far as immune systems that were greatly negatively affected.
Actually, I believe all three were nursing home patients at that point.
But but the key, the key point is the number of people hospitalized, that has not increased.
Correct.
Those people who have gotten it are home recuperating, and that's a real positive sign. I I would point that out.
Yeah, I would agree. Thank you for that. Moving on to charter revision, they continue to meet. If you have any comments, Bob Moore, did you get the opportunity to speak with them?
It was an hour and a half with them, yes.
Oh, my goodness.
Yeah.
Goodness.
You know, yeah, we we, you know, unfortunately, I babble on incessantly, but it was a they they covered quite, quite quite the spectrum, so. It was, they're obviously committed to doing a, to doing a an effective job. I give them a lot of credit.
Okay, I think that's it for me on charter revision. Sustainable Connecticut. Patrice Carson has been doing a yeoman's job here and has submitted our first draft for our initial sustainable Connecticut certification. We're hoping to hear back in sometime in June on what we might need to do to make that application basically a qualifying one, but the committee has put in a lot of hours and so have Patrice and Josh. So I I'm thinking that this is going to be very favorable. Next week, on May fifteenth, I'll be participating in a Zoom meeting put on by the Greater Manchester Chamber of Commerce for businesses in Manchester in Bolton to give them some information and answer their questions on reopening the state and how it may affect their individual business. So I'll be sending out an email to the business community and I'll copy each of the selectmen on that as well. And you're welcome to join us. It's, it'll be Friday, May fifteenth from nine to eleven in the morning. And I believe I'm done. Josh?
I I will keep it short and sweet. I think you really covered the COVID-19 preparations quite well. I do want to thank, Mike Aramita reached out to me over the weekend to point out that there was a little bit of information on our website. That was confusing and it and it happened to pertain to the recycling transfer center that we have. But given the fact that it's been impacted by the current health crisis, I thank you for pointing out that we had some work to do on making sure that our messaging was clear. If anybody else has other items that they want to see clarified, that they have been receiving too many questions about that really need to be addressed by the town on whether it's by social media, whether it's on the website. And we we have a ton of different options, but I need to have as much feedback as possible in order to best tailor our message and in order to put out the right information. So I appreciate that type of commentary.
Not a problem, Josh. If you don't know it, you can't fix it.
Exactly, exactly. As for administrators' goals, one of my key overarching goals, not necessarily one of the twelve I put in front of you, but a key theme throughout all of them has been increasing, I think, just communications in general and and improving on that as much as possible. I'm very excited to say that less than a week from now, this coming Monday, we will be joined in the selectman's office by the new media coordinator. That's the individual who will be taking the position that was formerly filled by Deirdre. And he will, he's Gary Silver, he's a young, soon to be graduate. Actually, as of this Saturday, will be graduate of University of Connecticut. I am very excited to have him meet all of you. I think that he has a lot of ideas. He certainly has a lot of experience with communications and working with different Yukon departments and making sure that they are effectively getting out information to their public that they serve. And I think will be an incredibly valuable asset for us to have as we continue to pursue transparency and generally increasing that type of communication with our residents. So more on that.
I have two questions. Do you have a summary yet of the work we did in Coventry, the senior center?
No.
Why not?
Our contractor has not yet provided it to us.
Love being able to get involved. Why?
I can tell you that there has been some movement on that. I've heard that they are in their final stages. And something that they've been working on is a regional brand. I know that we've discussed branding here for Bolton. But something that that project was tackling was more of an identity to be created for the four towns that are involved in that economic development research. They, they being Advanced CT, formerly known as CIRC, who was spearheading this project on behalf of the four towns, has hired on an individual to really take on that branding project. And my understanding is that in these next couple of weeks, they'll be finalizing that. And all of that information will be in the final report that comes out, which obviously we all wanted it to be here about. Let's go, but I think it will be very carefully considered. And unfortunately, it was just put off by the current health crisis.
Not a tough ball, I'm sorry. Second question. I missed the presentation about a town administrator versus a town manager. Is that any way something I can get over with it? And review myself?
Sure, so if you're speaking to the charter revision, commission's been considering the question of should there be town manager form of government or continuing with the current form of government? There was a presentation that was given at a charter revision commission meeting, I want to say in February. It might have, no, it must have been February. Where we had two individuals, first John Alsesser, who's the town manager in Coventry. And second, we had Mark Walter, the town administrator in Columbia. Both spoke on the differences between their jobs, the nuance of that. We don't have that posted publicly, the audio or video from that posted publicly on our website. But my understanding is that it was videotaped for CBC. So either on their website streaming, or I'm sure we could get a copy from CBC, a hard copy that I could share with you. Get a better sense from them about, at least from their outside perspective, what the difference is between those those jobs.
Thank you. Thanks very much.
And and Bob, you can give me a call. I spent twenty minutes talking about that with the, with the committee.
Okay.
Josh, I have a question for you, maybe for you or Sandy. But with the opening on on May twentieth, does that impact our operations at the town hall or is that being considered at all?
It's, sorry Sandy, if you want to jump in.
No, no, go ahead, Josh.
What I'm thinking about, or I've had a lot of thoughts about what the reopening at town hall should look like. And there are a number of different health factors for individuals who have approached me and and shared health information that I have to factor in as well. My current thoughts are that I don't see May twentieth to be a very specifically significant day for eastern Connecticut as compared to necessarily the rest of the state. I do want to continue over the next few weeks to monitor how eastern Connecticut is comparing. Given the fact that Bolton saw even just this past weekend, an uptick of three cases and a death. I'm, I don't want to blindly run into and say that we're embracing wholeheartedly the May twentieth date. I'm working with Jim Rupert, our emergency management director, on the possibility of really taking the operations that we had in March where we stepped down from full operations to our extremely limited operations right now and trying to walk it back up in a very methodical way.
Yeah. All right, well, perhaps I should have been more specific. I'm really looking at, like in a lot of, a lot of your retails and other departments have installed some Plexiglas in certain areas and basically creating barriers, you know, for people coming into the town, coming in and doing business with them. I don't know if you're considering that or not. If you're not, you may want to consider that, particularly Tom Clerk's office. There's areas where it's virtually impossible to do. But in areas where, you know, like Tom Clerk's, where it's in and out all the time, I I I'm just suggesting that's something you might want to consider.
Absolutely. Yes, we have Plexiglas that's going up in the town clerk's office and and really their sneeze guards, right? Right, so we have that going up in the town clerk's office. I believe the tax collector's office, that's the one I'm a little unsure of. But also library, front desk, as well as the senior center front desk.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Josh?
Not a problem.
Josh, I think going forward that what we're in is going to be the new norm. I remember when I was first a paramedic and we did IVs without gloves. And then the AIDS virus came along and everybody wore gloves, and now we're treating people with face masks. I think we have just seen the realization of our new normal, which is respiratory protection going forward. I think this is going to be a thing of the future. So we should look to that when we start making our our changes, that they're going to be permanent.
Agreed. And of course, we're examining as many permanent fixtures as we can, as many permanent changes as possible to prevent things like this and disease spreading in general. There are a few temporary fixes that we're also looking to do. It was brought to my attention, actually just today, that we really need to get going again on issuing marriage licenses. So I'm going to be working with the buildings and grounds crew on setting up now that the weather's nice. And this, again, a temporary measure, but we're going to have a table set up outside as well as a canopy that's weighed down with the intention of being able to come outside at a table that can be very easily wiped down, disinfected, where individuals can come and sign paperwork that really has to be signed in person, verified right there by the clerk. So that's, you know, we're moving forward on making sure we can offer as wide a variety of services as physically possible and to try and do that safely. The permanency of the measures that we're installing will have to be constantly updated, like you're saying. I think it's going to be a new norm and we have to figure out how to adjust to it. It's been very carefully thought over and I will continue to obviously work hand in hand with Sandy and you all on the loop as we make those decisions.
You know, I I appreciate that, Josh. I'm glad, I'm glad you're looking at that. Just another suggestion as far as communications with, once you, you know, once you set some of these things up in Tom Clerk's, you may just want to photograph them and let's, let let the townspeople know what we're doing.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's, it would be good for the administration to, you know, let folks know that, you know, we're making changes as well.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm shutting up.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Mike Aramita. Mike Aramita made the motion, I believe, Bob DePietro seconded. Opposed in favor? Abstentions?
Good night, all. Thank you very much. Good night. Thank you.